County Commission, before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like everybody to stand and I think we'd like to pay a moment of respect and recognition to the life and public service of Steve Metley. So if we would do that first, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning again, and just a reminder to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender, and if you need a listening device, Robert would be able to help you in the front row. With that, we'll go into routine business. Consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission meeting minutes from January 24th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstain, Commissioner Heiburger. Bills to be paid, $561,598.26.
Hey, the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
You know, today's bills include about, I'm going to list a couple here. Our electric, water, and gas bills total about $75,000 for our campus and some of our other facilities. We had a $114,000 bill for one bridge project, and we had $42,000 go through to the southeast mental health folks, which between those, that's $220,000 out of our $561,000 weekly bill.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item number four is just a report from the Human Services 2016 Annual and Fourth Quarter Report. Item five is personnel actions. Item A is to consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is a special commission action to approve a temporary increase of approximately 5% for Michael Tushen, road maintenance team leader for the highway department. Good morning, Jen.
Good morning, Jen Adams with Human Resources. This action is to provide a 5% temporary increase for Mike to fill in as the highway supervisor. 5% is consistent with the highway contract and what we've done with similar positions in the past.
Does anyone have any questions for Jen?
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
No applications for abatement, no notices or requests, no planning and zoning notice. Item nine is a petition for compromise. Mr. Wilson.
Morning Commissioners, Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. Commission Office has received an application for a compromise and release of liens for two DPNOs, for DPNO 89237 in the amount of $650 and 77200 also in the amount of $650. Now, the application and the request before you this morning is to compromise and release these liens in full only against the property that's described in the memo. This would leave it in full for the full amount against the individuals named on the liens and who would continue to owe those amounts of money to the county. The individuals named on the liens had been married but are now divorced. The first lien, 89237, is for poor relief services incurred in 2015 by one of the applicants, and the other lien, 77200, represents poor relief and public defender services provided to both ex-spouses in 2011 and 2012. The applicant who brings this action forward for your consideration today is the individual who sold the described property to the lienies on a contract-for-deed basis. The house was sold for $105,000 with a balloon payment due at the end of a two-year period. The would-be buyers defaulted on that contract-for-deed, did not close and go through, so the property has reverted back to the original owners. They are looking now to be able to attempt to resell that property and are requesting this action to remove the two liens, both in the amount of $650, $1,300 total, remove those from the property, leaving them in place in full against the individuals who incurred the lien, so they can sell the property without those liens attached. There is a representative for the applicants who is here and may wish to address you. I would stand by for any questions if you have any questions of me.
Does anyone have any questions for Robert at this point? If not, if the representative would like to identify himself and tell us your address, that'd be great.
Sure. My name is Dean Hammer. I'm an attorney in Del Rapids. I represent the sellers, Marcia and Charles Hooky, and I think Robert gave a very good summary of what happened here. I guess the point I'd like to make is that this lien was created through no action of my clients, it's just because the Villarails were buying the property from them and defaulted. Now with these liens, it creates a cloud on the title, so they're not able to resell the property. And as he stated, we're not asking that the debt be forgiven, we're just asking that the lien be removed from the property. There was also a large lien for, I think it was with Avera, and we were able to get that lien removed, so these are the only other two that we're concerned about.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hammer? You're off the hook, it looks like.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to take the liens off of the property involved and put them on the individuals, and then I would have a comment.
Is there a second for that?
Oh, it's second, and I also have a question.
Okay. Mr. Bar.
This is not the first time this has happened, but this type of transaction puts these properties at risk, in my opinion, because, again, I think this has come up, you know, six or seven times over my 11 years on this board, and it's, once you've got that contract-for-deed, you really have no way to control the person who may or may not be behaving properly in that property, which then reverts to you if it's been not paid and if it's been damaged. It's sad.
It is, yeah.
Dean, you got a comment?
Yeah, well, first of all, I know typically a contract-for-deed is done like this typically, you know, a lot of times just because the seller is being generous and willing to help somebody out, and it's too bad they get stuck in a situation like this, you know, no down payment or very little down. Was there a down payment in this case?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. My question is a matter of process, and maybe Kirsten can help me with this. You know, if this was a typical mortgage and we had a bank doing a foreclosure, how would that change the process? I mean, if the bank was foreclosing on this property, who would request the release of this type, or how would that work?
Well, generally, in the case of a mortgage, the bank has a senior interest by the very fact that the mortgage was executed. It doesn't really apply in the same way to a contract-for-deed. It's preserved in statute, actually, the mortgage company's position in a foreclosure, so automatically we are a junior lien holder, therefore, in the case of a mortgage, the bank taking back that possession is already kind of relieved of this situation, whereas in the case of a contract-for-deed, because it's a private contract between parties and that position is not preserved. This is the type of remedy that you have to look at. So that's the difference.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other questions for anybody else? If not, we have a motion and a second to remove the liens from the contract-for-deed and place it on the individuals. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes. I think, Mr. Hammer, you need to get some paperwork from Mr. Wilson probably at some point. I don't know if you can do that now or not? After the meeting?
Oh, all right. Thank you for your time.
Now, we're to the opportunity for public comment. If anybody has any comments they'd like to make that are about items not on the agenda, please do so, but first, we have a new head librarian, Jody Fick, from, I forgot how many years you've been with the library system, but...
Yeah, I started with Minnehaha County Rural Public Library back in 1990, and then in 1995, Minnehaha County Rural merged with Sioux Falls Public to become Suland Libraries. So I guess I've been there since the beginning of the current library system.
I think we're all gonna, we need her name and address.
Yes.
I shouldn't have given all of that information, but please do so we have it for record.
Yes. My name is Jody Fick. I'm the current director for Suland Libraries, and I reside on a farm in rural Minnesota near Laverne.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for...
I think I've known Jody since 1990 because she started out in Crox, correct?
Correct.
Yes, when I was taking my kids to the library unfrequently, and so I've known Jody for a long time and worked with her when I was on the library board, and she does an excellent job, so I'm super excited that she has accepted the position as library director because I know she'll do an awesome job, so.
I have a lot of, I guess I was a hands-on person. I've, over the years, we had interactions, especially with the Bookmobile program. I've actually written specs for two Bookmobiles so far, and I anticipate that in a couple of years, we'll be getting another new one because it's such a popular program. I did want to tell you about one thing that we have planned for our rural libraries this year. We just received word that we have been approved for E-rate reimbursement for technology advancements, so five of our rural libraries are going to be getting micro towers to bring the internet to them, so we're going to dramatically improve our internet connections. She'll be great for each one of those communities.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
That is awesome.
And I welcome you to come visit with me or take any tours. I'd be very happy to show you around.
I think it's pretty nice that you and Cindy started at the same time when you were in grade school. That's awesome.
Practically. Thank you.
Chair.
If I could, I've known Jody too for quite some time. She was the interim director, I think, was it five years ago?
Yes.
And got to work with her in her previous life there too, and I just want to congratulate you. It's well-deserved and looking forward. I'm now the board liaison, so I'm looking forward to that work too, so congratulations.
Yeah, if there are any improvements, any areas where you see that we could do it a little bit better, just give me a call, we're listening. We don't always know the viewpoints of everybody, so I rely on that to come to us, and we are all ears and ready to improve.
I think all of us remember back when, when the library system was having some funding-related issues, and all the communities stepped up frankly and made it happen, which was awesome on why that became such a high priority, and it's great that it's continued and grown, so thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Item number 10, or is there anybody else that has a public comment? Item number 10 is to consider a motion to authorize a $10,000 transfer from the Museum Store Fund to the Museum Special Enterprise Fund in accordance with the 2017 budget. Mr. Hoskins.
Good morning Commissioners, Bill Hoskins, Director of the Suland Heritage Museums. This was a item listed in the 2017 budget. The museum store is a revenue, fund is a revenue fund that accounts for expenses and revenues associated with operating the store. The store has actually been generating enough money that it can also help support some of our other operational expenses, and so for the last few years, we've been doing a balance transfer from the store to the museum enterprise fund in support of our education program. And this is asking for that action one more time. It does, per the state auditor, require a motion of the commission to make that happen, even though it was approved as part of the 2017 budget.
Any questions for Bill? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to authorize a $10,000 transfer from the museum store fund to the museum special enterprise fund in accordance with the 2017 budget. I'm stuck at that motion. I'm glad I didn't have to say it.
I can read really well.
Any questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Item 11 is to consider a resolution approving a revised joint cooperative agreement establishing the Southeastern Council of Governments, obviously called CCOG. I'm going to abstain from this only because I am a board member and a treasurer of the Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. One abstention, motion passes four to zero to one, I guess. Item number 12 is to consider a motion to authorize a general fund allocation in the amount of $15,000 to the Boy Scouts of America, Sue counsel from the revenue received through the Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Initiative.
Hey, you know, I think Carol James could probably, Aaron's coming, but I bet you Carol James could also give us a little bit.
We're moving too fast, Mr. Chairman.
Pause in the action.
There's Aaron and Carol.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Carol James. I'm a deputy state's attorney for Minnehaha County. I just had my 10-year anniversary, as you might remember, this month. I was asked to come and be here today for this request, and I fully support it. Since I started with the state's attorney's office, we have been diverting cases even before it was mandatory by Senate Bill 73, and I'm a big proponent of the diversion programs. Without Boy Scouts, we wouldn't have much option for diversion in this county, and other than the court service department, Boy Scouts have basically spearheaded the diversion efforts in this county since, before I started 10 years ago. So whatever the commission feels is appropriate to give to them, the state's attorney's office would completely support, and I think the request, Aaron can speak to the request, but the request for the amount was based on their proportion of the diversion cases that they've handled during the period of diversion time that's allowed by the bill to reimburse them.
Thanks, Carol. Good morning, Erin.
Good morning, Erin Serskam, Minnehaha County Commission Office, and part of the, what we're asking for today is $15,000 to the Boy Scouts. They ask for reimbursement for diversion, and what this is a part of is the Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Act. A part of that bill, they set aside a total of around $250,000 for state's attorneys to request reimbursement for successful diversions of youth within their community. It was a part to kind of motivate and act as a fiscal incentive to utilize community-based programming for low-offending youth in the community. We submit, we got a total of around $46,000 as a county, and as Carol said, a majority of our diversion programming is from the Boy Scouts. They requested $14,125, and I'm recommending just to round that out up to an even $15,000 to show our support and appreciation for them supplying those programs within our community.
Commissioner?
Mine is a question comment, but the remaining funds out of that $46,750 will go into the general funds, which helps support JDC, who also does diversion programs, but ours is through LSS, and, do we have another spot? But that's where the most of our diversion funding goes, is to LSS.
Yeah, we have, there's three different entities that really do diversion programming in our area. The Boy Scouts with three programs, the court services offers a diversion option, and then the other program that's offered is through Lutheran Social Services. It's a middle school diversion program, and there's a caseworker in two of the schools, and that's paid for through Minnehaha County JDC budget, and we contract with LSS to provide that service within those schools, so the remainder of that funding would support the youth programming that Minnehaha County pays for.
Any other questions for Erin?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. I have to tell you that scouts is a big deal in our family. I happen to be an Eagle Scout. My brother was an Eagle Scout, and our son is an Eagle Scout, and thank God there was no diversion program back then, or we would have used it. Is there any other comments? With that, we have a motion and a second to approve the transfer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is an update on the '92 legislative session. Mr. Wilson.
Good morning again Commissioners, Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. This year is a little unusual as far as bringing a legislative update to you in that usually we're coming to you earlier in January with some information, but it's just, we've been monitoring bills that are dropping and working with our folks up at SDACC, and the number of bills with potential county impacts has just been very low so far, and that's the reason we haven't come to you with this item before now. And I think overall, the number of bills is very low. They're at somewhere between 260 and 280 for a total number of bills right now. Sometimes we may be up at 600 by this point, so that it's just, for whatever reason, we're kind of a low volume this year and contributing to the reason you haven't seen me on this item prior. I'm just going to run through a couple of bills that we're watching. Stop me at any point as I'm running through these if you have questions. House Bill 1075, an act to repeal the authority of municipalities to exercise planning and zoning powers outside corporate limits of municipalities. And as we read this, this would prohibit joint zoning activities, and I've worked with, again, SDACC and talked with the city on this, and I can't really tell you what the background is or why this is coming. It hasn't been scheduled for a committee hearing yet, so I would imagine we'd get a little more information flushed out on this at that point. Talked to the city clerk's office, and they don't have a real fond view of the bill at this point, but I, when I spoke with Jim David over there, he had not yet had a chance to speak with the municipal league, and so we're still waiting for a little more information, but obviously going to watch this one closely. It's an odd one. Sometimes there are bills that cycle year to year. This is not one that we've seen in anything close to this form before, but we'll keep an eye on it, that's for sure.
I am curious who sponsored that.
Yeah. I don't have the bill, and I can get that for you.
I would like to know that.
I will get, I have it on my desk. I'll get it for you after the meeting.
Thank you.
And then, the next bill I had highlighted, 1079, an act to establish certain municipal assessment provisions. This is one that, again, our association has on the watch list. Really, it would allow unpaid delinquent municipal water and sewer charges to be added onto tax bills. I'm told from the auditor's office, it's something that was done years ago, and then it, that practice ended, and this would bring this back. It's, again, referred to local government committee as 1075 had, but has not been scheduled for a hearing yet.
Just a concern that I might raise about that, and obviously doesn't go anywhere yet, but, you know, how's that additional work placed on the county going to be paid for? These are city, these are city bills. These are not county bills, and I, you know, I'm concerned that they would try to put that back on the county treasurer's office and how they're supposed to collect those, and then what happens when they can't collect a water bill or a sewer bill? Who's responsible for that? And so I think there's really an awful lot of ins and outs, and I think we're going down a black hole, so it'll be interesting to see what the conversation is on the legislative side regarding this, Bill.
Absolutely.
Good comment.
Moving on, on the Senate side, Senate Bill 7, an act to revise the criteria for determining if property is classified as agricultural land for property tax purposes. And there's, for many years, it's been a, really, a three-part test for the use of determining if land should be classified as agricultural. It's not uncommon that we get a bill or two that would tinker with that process and the combination of the different factors and how they're considered. My understanding and reading on this one is that it makes the first of those three tests as a principal use for agricultural production, more or less a mandatory rather than just simply being a two of the, a two of three. We've worked with our equalization office, ultimately, what effect would it have on us, and Diane has indicated to me that ultimately it would be a relatively minor impact, would And Diane has indicated to me that ultimately it would be a relatively minor impact, would not be of great importance. But it's, again, it's one we'll watch. Moving on, Senate Bill 66, an act to specifically classify certain agricultural land as riparian buffer strips to establish the criteria for riparian buffer strip classification and to provide for taxation thereof. And this would create a classification of land along the edge of rivers or lakes. It's not one that the association has taken a position on. Equalization indicates that the effect would be fairly minor, but it was one that we were asked to track.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm on the East Dakota Water District, and it's not just out of being a greenie that this is a good idea. The fact is that the contaminants in the water are a burden on all of us, as we have to pay to clean the water before we can drink it. And the riparian barriers would prevent runoff from fire operations to include chemicals and manure. The problem with the bill is that it requires a farmer who has set aside a strip of land along a river to come in annually to renew that tax exemption. You know, obviously with the elderly tax freeze, your income levels may change, and so therefore you have to apply every year. But people are going to forget to do this and lose the $50 they might save otherwise. And certainly, it would cause additional traffic in our office. But again, I think last year, the governor vetoed the bill, and this year, it's the governor's bill. And I really, as an advocate for clean water in the East Dakota Water District, I know that the friends of the Big Sioux River, et cetera, are all favoring this, and it seems a logical thing to do. The scenic five or six cattle standing in the Big Sioux River are the problem, not the cattle that are safely ensconced in a barn.
Commissioner?
Yes?
Just a comment question about that is that I think that there were, years ago, they looked at the runoff and the quality of the water coming into Sioux Falls, north of Sioux Falls, and the quality of the water north of Sioux Falls was better than the quality of the water of south of Sioux Falls because of the runoff in the city of Sioux Falls.
You are absolutely right.
And so I think you're targeting agriculture.
It's not targeting agriculture, it's just being prudent. And yes, if you look at the nitrates given off going down the river, the worst two spots are just below Watertown and just below Sioux Falls. But then, when you get down south of Canton, when you start getting runoff from Iowa, it all goes to heck.
That's Iowa's problem, then not South Dakota's. Thank you.
Next bill I would bring to your attention that was brought to my attention, Senate Bill 109, an act to provide certain criteria for meeting the ownership requirements for classifying dwellings as owner-occupied property. And the really effective change on this is it removes some language, applicable language from administrative rule into statute. Again, working with Equalization Department, it really doesn't have an effective change for us. It memorializes in statute the process that 65 of 66 counties are already using. But again, it was a concern that was brought forward to our office to track, and so we flushed it out with SDACC and had some help with that, and they reached out to revenue. And so the effective impact of this would be extremely minimal, if anything. Senate Bill 113, an act to require certain provisions to be met before distribution of the 911 emergency surcharge revenue and revise the effective date of the sunset clause provisions that lower the 911 emergency surcharge and revenue, and revise the methods of distributing funds. The big part here is there's a portion of the 911 fund that we receive back from the state is due to sunset in 2018. This extends that sunset out a year to 2019. Some of the additional requirements that are imposed on PSAPs or standards that they have to meet, we have reached out to Metro Communications. They have no concerns about this. And so it's a, I think the big item is that it extends out that sunset clause one year. I was maybe a little surprised to see that didn't get extended a little further, but it does move it one year. And that's a significant source of funding for us for the Metro Communications expenses. Again, it was referred to Senate appropriations, but has not yet been scheduled for a hearing. Then the final one that I would bring to your attention is Senate Bill 121, an act to make an appropriation for the completion and upgrade of the South Dakota Public Safety Radio System and to declare an emergency. And this, I think you're aware of the issues that some of the public safety folks have brought to our attention with a need to upgrade state radios to meet this P25 national standard. And this is a bill that has just been introduced, and when I spoke with Bob Wilcox yesterday, he was still looking into this, but it appears that this appropriation would be the first payment of seven or eight payments that would cover the full cost of the needed upgrade that has been a point of concern for local officials for going on a couple of months now. But we're, again, this is one just recently dropped, needs more information, but this appears to be very good news.
Commissioner Hybryer?
I'd also be interested in who was sponsoring this bill, and then as it comes forward, do we need to testify on behalf of this, or who do we have from Minnehaha County that might be testifying on behalf of this bill once we get some more information?
Prime sponsor on this bill is Senator Deb Peters.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I know that, I guess I've heard the number of $27 million for the full replacement on our radio system. Is this an incremental payment towards that, or is this a patch to keep our current system going, I guess?
What I've been told, and I don't know if this is accurate because I haven't followed it that close, but this is an offer by the vendor as a lease purchase over a seven-year period of time to start the process now rather than waiting till we have the full, and I think the number I heard was like 21 to 23 million. So my guess, this is somewhat of an alternative opportunity, if you will. Sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
No problem.
You probably have an idea.
Yep. Excuse me, Commissioners Lind Young, Emergency Management. So as Robert indicated, the bill just came out last week. We're not exactly sure, but what we think is, back in November, or excuse me, the October timeframe, you guys were briefed out at the County Commissioners Association. The total cost that the vendor was quoting, or the state, is $21,595, or $565. So it's our understanding that this would be the first payment of a multi-year lease payment option, lease payment contract to do that. And with that, that would be the upgrade to approximately 6,000 radios to the P25 compliance. And then for the individual radios, and then about $5.5 million for the network, the system. And then also, previously, there was a legislative study that said, you've got the system, but it needs to expand coverage into underserved areas. So that would be a couple million dollars for that, and then another couple million dollars for, or about $4.5 million for towers, buildings, and generators, and et cetera, to expand that coverage. So a total of about $21 million for this. I think the big thing, this is super important for Minnehaha County, I think you all know that, but we're also in the middle of the, excuse me, Homeland Security Grant Cycle, and I'm putting together some numbers and some proposals for that that'll be looked at. But just in Minnehaha County, and this is a working document, it's still got scratches on it, but we have approximately 1,200 radios in Minnehaha County for public safety agencies, including fire EMS and law enforcement, and then another couple hundred with the Public Works divisions for us. So if we have to go out and pay for the upgrade, which is about, which is $600 per radio to meet that P25 compliance, it's about, and keep in mind, this is all-inclusive city, county, it's about $720,000 just for our county for that upgrade. So if the state does an upgrade based on the timeframe, then we transition over into completely brand-new radios in 2025, based on the information that we have, and that's about $4 million. So we really need this as a short-term fix. But then what I also want to tell the Commission is, the majority of the radios that we have in the county are the XTS, XTL series, and the vendor is discontinuing support for those after 2019. So I would tell you that in the next several budget sessions, you should talk to your public safety agencies, Sheriff's Office, myself, and the Highway Shop, and ask us, well, what's our plan to replace them? Because 98% of these radios that were purchased, maybe not 98%, but a large percentage of the radios that were purchased were purchased from Homeland Security Grants from the time of the inception of the Homeland Security Grant Program until now, and/or the Public Safety Interoperable Communications Grant Program. So the initial radios were purchased that way, and now it's time to upgrade. I don't see money in this process here to purchase new radios going forward. They'll upgrade them, but then there's a window, and we'll need to start purchasing new radios. And based on the amounts that we have, you know, I would suspect the Commission should start allocating dollars for that in the future as we go to the next upgrade, so.
My recollection of that conversation at the County Commission Conference or whatever was also that after they quit manufacturing, there's only about a five-year opportunity for parts to be obtained?
And that's what I'm indicating is here is they'll support the radios that we currently have until 12/31/19.
Okay.
They support them and everything, and then basically, that means they'll manufacture parts and everything until 12/31/19. After that, there's a window where they got the parts on the shelf, and then those radios will start falling off because you're not able to get the spare parts. And what I'm saying is, is in between, we need to start allocating radios or dollars to replace those radios because we know they're going to be outdated and out of support. What that number is, well, I think we need to look at that, but you have a large percentage of those radios operating in Minnehaha County, like I said, whether it's the Sheriff's Office, my office, or the Highway Shop.
Commissioners?
So Lynn, the numbers you use include the sheriff's?
Yep.
Because my understanding is that the sheriff has been upgrading radios.
Yep, so we've been using Homeland Security dollars the last couple of years, and I know that he has, he's using some other grant dollars to upgrade, but based on our accounts, he's got about 36 mobiles that he needs and about 68 portables that he needs. And if you add those two numbers together on completely new ones, it comes up to about $340,000.
What is it in new radios?
Cost per radio? Some of that is depending on the type, and there's several types, and you can go all the way from about $4,800 a radio to $2,900 a radio. So for the Sheriff's Office, you know, depending on the options you look at, whether it's mounted in the trunk, whether it's mounted up front, whether it has encryption, all of those things on the mobile radio matter, and then even on the portable radio, depending on the options that you choose, whether it's extra battery, speaker mics, and those things, that radio would be about $3,200 a radio. So there are significant costs coming, and I think this bill by Senator Peters, another person of local interest, Representative Jamison is on that group. So I think we have strong allies there to show that, listen, this is important to the county, this is important to us, this is part of the commitment that the state offered when they originally started the state radio system, and it enhances public safety as we know it today. So we need to get behind this, or at least the Commission needs to get behind this, give us a direction of where you want us to go. But this is a good bill for Minnehaha County. It gets the ball rolling, it gets that upgrade going, and then it buys us some time on the replacing of radios as we go in the future.
I think it's not only a good thing for our county, it's a good thing for the whole state.
Yep, absolutely. And the other reason is, is we don't have a backup in Minnehaha County. When we hopped onto the state radio system with the state, we gave them the necessary frequencies that we had to give to the system to expand it, and we've expended through Metro Communications, excuse me, and like I said, through grant dollars, a lot of dollars in infrastructure and some of those other things. So this is a big deal for us.
It is a big deal. Any other questions for Lynn? Thank you, Lynn. I didn't mean to ignore you.
Nope, no problem.
Anything else, Robert?
Final thought is just simply that these are the bills I'm tracking at this point. If you have anything that you have questions about, or one specific question you want me to run down on a bill or something you've heard of, please give me a call, and we'll keep updating this list through the rest of the session.
Okay. Item number 14 is Commissioner liaison reports. Any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Karski and I attended the Fire Chiefs Annual Meeting the other day, and certainly we had a, not only a good time, but we actually heard some good info about the cooperation between the many departments in our county on that huge fire they had north of Crooks where eight departments responded. And, you know, it was high wind, 30 mile steady winds, 60 mile an hour winds, thousands of hogs died in that fire in the middle of the night. You know, the roof blew off the building that was on fire, and no one was injured. They were up to their knees in water, and there was no water at the location. They had to truck it all in, and there's just a single lane driveway going into this thing. An amazing effort on their behalf, and certainly a story that I think we, as a community, would all benefit hearing at greater detail.
Can I just add to that? I'm trying to remember the name of the chief that told that story.
Chief Hartseth.
Mike Hartseth from Crooks? Yeah, excellent. I mean, to hear that story and what went down that night was truly amazing, and 100,000 gallons of water in 90 minutes. Other fire departments around the country couldn't believe that they were able to transport that much water in that short of a time. The fact that nobody was hurt, the coordination between the numerous organizations, yeah, it was a fantastic story. I think, Lynn, you were also elected to, what is it, treasurer for the organization that night?
Nope. As a matter of just general operations, I trade a stay away from everybody else's money. It's not a good idea. It's something that the sheriff told me a long time ago, is just don't ever get involved in that. It's not good for us. But anyway, so I do serve on the Board of Directors for that organization and help them do all the things that they need to do, and it's good for them, it's good for us, it's the right thing to do, and I can help them get a lot of things done during the day that they may not, and do a lot of planning and some of those other issues. So it's, they're certainly a great group to be a part of. The county is lucky having all of the volunteers that we do have out there. They provide a huge service for the county. And, you know, the one thing you might have seen the last couple of days is the Spearfish Fire Department transitioned last year from a volunteer to a paid. You know, I don't know when it'll happen, but at some point, at the call volume your agencies are running, it's probably going to happen. Maybe not in the next couple of years, but maybe 10, 15 years out that those services just continue to be requested, and the numbers that they're doing continues to rise, so.
Mr. Chairman, Lynn, in the old days, would those eight fire departments have different radio frequencies and different radios, or would they just been on the fire frequency?
No, so in the old days, there would have been a western, east, or a north, or a south. So once again, they're all on the state radio system. It allows them to stay on the same radio frequency. If there's another call, Metro can assign another one if required. But once again, they're all on the same radio system today.
That's today.
In the past, they wouldn't have been.
So they would not have been able to talk to each other, truck to truck?
They would have, but they would have had to make changes on the radios and everything. So this is definitely an enhancement from what they had many years ago, so.
Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Bender?
I was going to give an update. Commissioner Bennega and I were able to attend a good chunk of the kind of kickoff training for the new pretrial assessment tool. The folks from the Arnold Foundation were here. There's a large group of people. It was the day of the snowstorm, so the folks from Pennington County had to attend via conference call, but it was a great meeting to get everything moving forward. There's just like anything that's worthwhile. It takes a little effort, and there's a few challenges to overcome, but I think overall that it was, it was good for us to be able to tend to get a better insight into what some of those challenges are, but also to see the great potential that we have here going forward. And having both Pennington and Minnehaha County both participating through that with the same tool through the Arnold Foundation, I think, gives the state a real good kickstart as to being able to implement this kind of program.
I'm sorry, go ahead. The only thing that I would add, it was nice that we had excellent participation from the, obviously, the administration, but we also had the state's attorney, the public defender, the public advocate, the sheriff's office, the city of Sioux Falls.
Judge Long and several other judges were there providing great leadership.
Court systems, IT, everybody was, quote, invested, if you will, in time and effort, along with the Arnold Foundation to get this off the ground, so to speak. And it's going to take a long time to make all those pieces come together, but it's got wonderful, I think, opportunities for some streamlining and some support. Yes, sir?
I have one more.
Yep.
Just kind of in another piece of good news. I think sometimes there's so much negative press about law enforcement that when we have opportunities to tout all the good work that they do every day. Yesterday, and I wasn't able to attend, but yesterday, deputy sheriff from our sheriff's department and Metro personnel were recognized for their role in delivering a baby in the bathroom out near Crooks, and it's just a great story and a great kind of happy ending for everybody. So I just really appreciate that work those folks do.
Any other liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business? I think we'll take about a 10-minute break because the executive session might last forever. I don't think I've ever seen a longer agenda. So we'll take 10 minutes and then come back.
You want a motion to move?
Oh, that would be a good idea.
I'm at motion to move into executive session.
I'll second that.
Contracts, litigation, and personnel.
Yep. I was so excited to go to the bathroom, I forgot. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.